I guess I missed the real.
No, I've been here all day. I've had this whole semester. No, I think I might be in my.
Oh, was that?
The whole eye thing freaking out. Hate that.
Alright, so you gave us both?
I could be having a small stroke, but given, oh actually, giving the meeting that I had today.
I don't have Mark.
Giving the meeting that I had earlier, it could easily be that case.
No, I don't have Mark.
You just handed me yours. Oh, here, here's Mark. Alright, so I have two Aprils and one Mark.
It could just be, it could just be the like. I just feel overwhelmed because I was here on Saturday and I was here on Friday. So it could just be like.
She's just handing out Marks as well.
Which one are you handing now?
March is on the back of the April one she handed, just handed.
I did have bacon, because I went to the Luxor's buffet downstairs. One day it was good. I do have to say that it's, it's nice that the restaurants are right there and you don't have to go anywhere if you don't want to, but if you want to stay in the hotel, you can stay. Thank you. Seeing that for Venetian, I'm going to see Elton John. And I'm, because I'm afraid that one of these days, one of these days it's gonna be like.
This is the other one.
I'm not gonna go out to see him before. Well, he's like, I think it's pretty soon. Remember when he stopped making music?
March minute.
Get a chance to see him when we see New York City instead.
Little bit.
Well, they were playing together. Like in a, in a, in a, like a small nightclub type thing. It was very into my venue and. We went down to New York City and we saw them.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's now seven P M. on May fifteenth, two thousand seventeen. This is the Planning and Zoning Board for the City of Tarpon Springs in our regular session tonight. My name is Bill Vincent and I'm the chairman of the board. Uh, we'll begin with a roll call.
Chairman Vincent?
Here.
Mrs. St. Arnold?
Here.
Mister Parker?
Here.
Mister Seaman?
Here.
Mister Hossi?
Here.
Mrs. Protos?
Here.
Mister Terrapany?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum and, uh, our next item on the agenda is number two, approval of minutes. We have minutes for March twentieth of two thousand seventeen and minutes for April seventeen, two thousand seventeen.
Can we approve them both at once?
I believe so, but I, I have a correction on one of them.
Yeah, I know you. Have a name, right? A name change?
Yes, uh, on April seventeenth, one of the witness names was listed as on some page. Page six of the April seventeenth minutes. Uh, it says Jim McLean, um, but I believe that was, uh, Tim, wait a minute, it said, yeah.
I corrected it.
You corrected, okay, that's alright, okay, okay, so it's been corrected, okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as they stand for March and April of twenty seventeen.
Second. Was correct.
Take a roll call vote?
Mister Terrapany?
Uh, I wasn't, wasn't here, um, for those meetings taking place, so is it right if I vote on that?
If you've read them.
Mister Chairman?
I think.
I believe you can vote on it. Okay, move, uh, yes.
Mrs. Protos?
Yes.
Mister Hossi?
Yes.
Mister Seaman?
Yes.
Mister Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. St. Arnold?
Yes.
Mister Vincent?
Yes.
Next, our, the city attorney will do the quasi judicial announcement and swear in any witnesses who wish to speak tonight, so if you do want to come to the podium and speak tonight on any issue, when the time is right, please stand and raise your right hand and take the oath with everyone else. Not quite yet. Wait until she reads her, her announcement, then she'll, at the end of it, she'll ask you to stand. Thank you, sir.
This is a quasi judicial proceeding where the Planning and Zoning Board acts in a quasi judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria, containing the code of ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the code of ordinance, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code of ordinance, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. Are there any members of the board wishing to disclose any expertise, communications, or conflicts of interest this evening? Seeing none, if there's anyone who is wishing to testify this evening, if you could stand and raise your right hand to this board. Yeah, you stand now. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So, this one.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, let me go back to the roll call. I forgot to welcome Townsend Terrapany to the board. Welcome again.
Glad to be here.
Townsend has served here before, then he served the scent at the Board of Commissioners until he termed out, and he's back on our board. Uh, the next item on the agenda is item number four, application seventeen dash forty-three, ordinance two thousand seventeen dash twenty, Geolusis, it's a request for a zoning amendment to rezone approximately point eight zero acres of real property located at six twenty Bay Shore Drive from R one hundred to R one hundred A. And we'll begin with the staff report.
Good evening, everybody. Um, this application again is a request to amend the zoning designation from R one hundred to R one hundred A for a property located at six twenty Bay Shore Heights, approximately eight tenths of an acre. Uh, the existing future land use will remain the same, which is RL, that's why this is just a zoning amendment, because the zoning or the future land use category for R one hundred and R one hundred A is the same, it's residential low, which is why you're only dealing with the zoning at this particular time. Um, with that, the subject property was located in the sun, subject, the Sunset Hills subdivision. The property was plotted in nineteen four and consisted of two sixty foot wide lots. The existing single family home was built on the property in nineteen fifty-four, and at that time, the city had a different zoning schema than we have right now. Um, in fifty-four, the zoning schema actually had this, uh, property zoned as R one A A, and essentially, under R one A A, sixty foot wide lots were allowed. Now, again, that zoning schema came in after the original subdivision was already plotted, so the subdivision was plotted in nineteen twenty-four with the sixty foot wide lots. The schema at the time, in fifty-four, when the house was built, allowed to be, for one house to be built on each of those lots. And in nineteen seventy-six, we changed that schema and went within what you recognize now is the R one hundred district, okay? That district requires seventy-five foot lots. At the time that this house was built, the lot, it was built across, it was built across both lots, both lots were used for that one home site, so it had a hundred and twenty foot of frontage. What the applicant's actually asking for at this point in time is to be able to modify the, that home site by removing the existing structure that's there, the nineteen fifty-four house, and then they want to be able to, um, change the zoning to allow for sixty-five foot lot rather than the seventy-five foot lot that's allowed in, um, R one hundred. As a result, they would have two home sites instead of just the single home site. And with that, um, I'm gonna go through the review criteria for the zoning change, um, but that's, that's the gist of the history of that. So essentially, we had a different schema of zoning in place when that house went in, and has subsequently changed as a result of, um, your changes in nineteen seventy-six that were then carried over into the nineteen ninety code, which is your current code that you're working out of. So R one hundred requires a seventy-five foot lot today, just like it did in nineteen seventy-six. However, the house was built at a different time and a different era. And with that, the proposed one, R one hundred A zoning designation permits a maximum density and intensities of uses that are consistent with the residential low future land use designation. The proposed zoning does not conflict with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. The proposed R one hundred A zoning allows for the same uses as the R one hundred district. The proposed uses are consistent with the existing and planned uses in the surrounding area. The proposed R one hundred A is consistent with the existing and planned growth patterns for area. The R one hundred zoning district will allow for redevelopment that is consistent with the original plat. Several lots to the north and west have already been rezoned to R one hundred to allow for this development. And just another additional, uh, comment on this particular analysis, this is just south of Bay Shore Heights. The Bay Shore Heights subdivision is in the north section, this is the south section that we're dealing with, so we're in the same section, um, of the city. Um, we're just dealing with the southern section versus the northern section, and we do have property, one along Gulf, one along Peninsula and Ford, and one, and two other lots on Peninsula that have been actually, um, rezoned at this time from R one hundred to R one hundred A. So there are properties in the area that have been rezoned. Uh, the impacts on public facilities are not expected to be significant under the proposed zoning district. The property is served by, uh, city water. Um, the wastewater will be managed by on-site septic system sewer, uh, city sewer is not available in this particular part of the section. Now, Bay Shore Heights is connected to city sewer, and there are other properties along Peninsula and Gulf that are connected to sewer. The ones that are on Ford Avenue, it's hit or miss, there, there is a line that comes down, but it doesn't necessarily come to the area where the other lots that have been rezoned are. So, the issue of whether or not everything's connected to wastewater and that's why the rezonings are through, that's not, that's not a consistent statement. There are, um, inconsistency with the way the wastewater's been done in that Ford Peninsula area, that some lots are connected and some lots aren't. Again, the proposed zoning is expected to generate the same volume of traffic and have similar impacts on our public facilities. Any future development is subject to the city's mobility management provisions. Uh, the technical review team saw this application on April twenty-seventh, uh, two thousand seventeen, and during that meeting, the, the big issue was the fact that they were gonna have to be served by a septic system because water and sewer were not there, and we've acknowledged, and the applicant has acknowledged that situation. They recognize that if the, if they cannot get a permitted septic system, they will not be allowed to build on both lots. They, they recognize that that, that that's an issue, that's a state permit. Um, this board does not have any purview on that because those are state regulations, and the applicant is aware of that. They will have to go through whatever processes the state has in place for them to seek relief if they can't get a septic system on the, on those individual lots. With that, um, this application was advertised, there was a sign posted on the property, we did send notification within two hundred feet, and we did, um, also put an advertisement in the newspaper. And with that, staff is recommending approval of the following, the zoning from R one hundred to R one hundred A. And I can answer any questions that you may have.
I have one. Is there sewer planned for that?
Not in the immediate future. Now, that doesn't mean that sewer won't come to that area at some point in time, but there is no plan right now in the immediate future, in the next three to five years, which is what we look for in the concurrency analysis. Is it imminent where it would be in place in the next three years? And the answer to that question is no.
Do we know the height of the property?
The height of the property? Let me see if I have a, uh, if that's on the survey in here. I think there was a survey in here.
Looks like it's twelve point seven to thirteen feet on Bay Shore side and five point seven.
Why do I not?
Five point four.
I don't.
At the, at the boundary line of the plat.
Thank you.
Anita?
Is this where the old Thompson home is?
That I'm gonna have to defer to the applicant, because I don't know who lived in that home in the past.
We've got to realize is, the lot fans out this way. You know, it's like a high shape in a sense, it fans out, so it is a very large piece of property.
It is, it, it's, it's larger when you're on the, on the bayou side as opposed to on the roadside.
I have a question. Uh, I noticed in the staff report, um, under the background section, whoever prepared it states that the owner acquired the property in nineteen eighty-eight. Um, the deed that's in here that was part of a backup shows that the property was acquired in two thousand and one.
Okay.
My question is, does that change and make any difference in, uh, the staff's recommendations?
Not for this particular type of application.
I can see where the confusion was, and the deed, it, it refers to the grantors being a trustee of the Leo Glab Trust under will dated October sixth nineteen eighty-eight. That was the date of the will. He died nineteen eighty-eight, his wife continued to live on the property. She died in about two thousand or two thousand and one, and then the trustee then sold the property.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll change that in the staff report going forward, um, but that does not change, um, uh, all it would change is the last statement that the current land development code was adopted in nineteen ninety, that wouldn't be applicable, it wouldn't matter that it was adopted in nineteen ninety, but it, it doesn't change, um, when the property, when they acquired the property, doesn't change the basis for why staff's recommending approval here where it's consistent.
So when it was required, acquired, um, there was one house built on the middle of two lots?
Correct.
Okay. Um, could you refresh our memory, uh, for the board as to what is spot zoning and what, and if that's permissible or not?
Well, spot zoning is defined as, um, an impetus where you change the zoning on one lot, but I would argue that this is not a case of spot zoning in the true sense, because you've already signaled to the market by making the changes that you've made all through that section, that this is a transitional area. You, you can't start signaling to the market that we're willing to change, uh, you know, lots just to the west and north of this lot, and then very north of this lot, go through a whole subdivision change without having some type of justification for that. Why were those other ones appropriate? None of those other ones are contiguous to each other. They are all in a situation where they are separated throughout the section. So I think that, at this point in time, the board, by doing the types of, um, uh, those types of zoning changes that they've done in this area has signified that they're, that this is a transitional area. Those zoning changes started in probably the mid nineties, and they've gone through, up through two thousand and seven, and then Bay Shore Heights was later done in two thousand and fourteen. So, you've signified in the last ten years that this is a transitional area by allowing those zoning changes to go forward. So I wouldn't consider this a true case of, of spot zoning.
And when you say those zoning changes, those are the three or four, I think, that you mentioned?
Correct. And then Bay Shore Heights, again, is north of this. It's, it's really not applicable, because we're dealing with, you know, half section here not thing, but it is just north of this pro, of this project.
Heather, in terms of the existing zoning of R one hundred, if, if the property, or does, if, if we were to subdivide these two lots with the current zoning, does, uh, is the dimensional criteria met with the exception of the front, uh, yards, the front yard dimension?
As far as the existing home or far as future homes?
If you were to, in the current existing zoning, it has enough square footage to subdivide.
That's correct.
Okay, and if you were to do that, you could meet, your, your rear yard is not an issue, your side yards are not an issue. It's merely an issue of the front yard, sixty feet, or seventy-five feet versus sixty.
That is true, however, R one hundred has, R one hundred A has slightly different setback criteria for the sides, um, than the R one hundred, strict the R one hundred does. Um, however, that, yes, they could meet the zoning criteria with the exception of the width of the lot at this particular time.
Right, so everything else in terms of they were gonna build a house on each lot and subdivide the lot and have buildable lots, the side yard setback could be met, the rear yard, the actual dimensional criteria with the exception of the front.
Correct.
So, one could potentially, as an applicant, ask for a variance on this if they could prove a hardship.
Not, they, they couldn't ask for a variance under the, that section of code, because you can't give a dimensional variance for the width of a lot. So that's why they can't go through the variance process. This is their relief valve there. Now, they can make, they can attempt to go under the non-conforming status. The problem is these lots have been held together for so long at this point in time, they really don't meet that criteria there either, so that would be something that staff wouldn't be able to support, but you can't get a variance for lot width, which is the reason why they can't go that route. They, they, their only option at this particular time to do what they want to do here, which is use the existing historical pattern, would be, um, the, the chance to rezone.
Right, and it's still, uh, as you mentioned, you're not, there's no need to amend, uh, the land use category, because you're still going, even though you're rezoning, you're going to the residential low.
Correct.
If you were to rezone to R seventy A, what would it, what would it do? Would it trip you into?
You would, yeah, you're dealing with a higher density there, because you're dealing with smaller lot sizes, and when you do that, then you get into, you're going to have to change the land use category and go up to a higher land use category, which would probably be, in this case, the residential urban category, which, there is R one, there are, is R seventy A in this section as well. This, the section is not a purely R one hundred section, like we deal with some a little bit farther out. This is a little bit closer into town, and as a result, we've had other projects that have happened in these, in this area that have changed some of that historical, um, pattern for what has historically been here. And so as a result, you're dealing with not a whole array, but you do have several different zoning categories that you do have in the section.
And Bay Shore Heights, we know is a good example of this, uh, rezoning to R one hundred A, but you said there's other examples in the immediate area, and how long ago were those?
Correct, um, one was done in nineteen ninety-five, one was done in two thousand and seven, and another one was done in the mid nineties. I wasn't able to tra, trace back exactly, but it was either right at the cusp of when the zoning district changed in the seventies. Um, it was after the seventies, but it was before the nineteen ninety code, somewhere in that timeframe. I just wasn't able to get with the clerk to get an exact date on that.
But Bay Shore Heights, uh, the Bay Shore Heights project, which was like sixty-something lot.
Correct.
Has R one hundred A.
Correct.
And that was, they're building in there now.
That's right, that was done in two thousand and fourteen.
So, I mean, the way I see it is, it would be one thing if there wasn't enough land to meet the R one hundred criteria. There's enough, there's more than enough land. There's almost, yeah, I mean, there's almost three lots there. The issue to me is just the front yard dimensions. You can't meet the seventy-five, but you can meet the sixty. It's not that, you know, she even needs to get away with twenty, sixty feet in the front yard, to me, is pretty good size. So, you know, from a, from a redevelopment standpoint, and as we continue to see this in town, from my perspective, you drive around town and there's vacant lots being built on all over, uh, as the town continues to grow and more and more lots are redeveloped that sit on two lots, but the house happens to be in the middle, I think you're gonna see applications, applications like this. So from a redevelopment standpoint, to have two waterfront houses on the tax rolls and two docks being taxed and everything like that, considering all the things, uh, mentioned, um, you know, I would move approval when the time comes, if not now.
Yeah, that's, we're not ready for that yet, Mister Terrapany, thank you. Um, any other questions of staff, by the board member?
Mister Terrapany said it all.
Okay, then we'll go to the applicant, if the applicant would like to make a presentation or statement.
Well, I'm probably not gonna say any more than what I've heard just now. My name is Renee Geolusis, and I'm here this evening to request the rezoning of my lot at six twenty Bay Shore Drive from R one hundred to R one hundred A. The reason is, I might utilize the existing subdivision pattern as my lots were subdivided at a time when sixty-foot wide lots could be developed on. With the rezoning of Bay Shore Heights, I'm a realtor, so I'm kinda aware of the lot sizes that are around, so. With the rezoning of Bay Shore Heights, the Board of Commissioners sent a signal to the market that sixty-foot wide lots are appropriate in this area. Because of that rezoning, it resulted in sixty-foot, uh, wide lots being developed. Since the requirements for building are sixty-foot in width and are no different in the uses, the change in zoning would be compatible with the surrounding existing land uses and identical to the R one hundred zoning district. I don't know if you have any questions. I, my intent is to build myself a home on there and my son another one in the future. Um, I think it would just beautify Bay Shore Drive a little bit more, and that's about it. So I'm, that's why I'm asking for the rezoning. And when we did purchase it, uh, you know, I purchased it under the, um, auspices that, um, that it was two lots and it could be developed as two lots. That's all I have to say.
Any questions by the board for the applicant?
Nope.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your consideration.
Any members of the public wishing to speak, uh, in opposition to the application? Please state your name and address when you arrive at the podium, sir.
Yeah, hi, my name's William Church. I live at six one two Bay Shore Drive, which is just further south, I guess you'd say, um, from Renee's property. Renee actually sold me the house, uh, so we're, um, quite appreciative of that. It's a beautiful location. Loved the lot. The house that's on there now needs some work, and, you know, she came in recently and cleared out the lot and, um, thought was gonna, um, uh, spruce it up for the family, but, um, and have, uh, the son live in the house. But, uh, as I, as she spent some time on the property, I think she realized how beautiful it was. My issue is, I'm right on the fence line. You probably can't see this picture too well, but this is out my back porch. And right next to this fence line, which is ten feet away, would be her house. And to me, you know, I bought this, this view, thinking that, you know, there was gonna be one house on the lot, and now that there's a chance for two of them, and one right next to the fence line, I lose that entire view. Not only do that, I lose the view, but I also have to put up a privacy fence, because, you know, I'll be looking at them and they'll be looking at me as I'm sitting in my backyard enjoying some quiet enjoyment. So, my issue is that, you know, and if you, if she's got the right to build two houses there, then five extra feet makes a difference to, to my side in any ways, so that's, uh, why I oppose the, um, rezoning.
Thanks, sir. Any questions for the witness while I just, podium?
Do you own the gray house?
It's actually a, or it's a, uh, green teal, teal colored house.
Mister Terrapany?
Is that house, uh, does it have a for sale sign in front of it right now? Is it being painted?
No, that's two doors down.
Two doors down.
We're right next door to the.
Right next door to the lot.
Yeah, yeah. And it is, it's a beautiful piece of land. I, I would suggest knocking down that building and putting up a really nice one, one house there, but that's their call.
Thank you, sir. Any other members of the public wish to speak in opposition to the application? Any members of the public, uh, wish to speak in favor of the application, please come forward. Seeing none, the public portion of this hearing is closed, and we'll go to the board for deliberation and discussion. Miss Protos?
Uh, I remember when the lots were purchased, uh, and the plan was to live there next to her uncle. George Sarah, since he passed away, so it's been a long time in coming, uh, to do this. When Mrs. Thompson and her husband built that house, Bay Shore was really very, like, out in the country still, to a point. And, um, they didn't want, they built it on the two lots, because they wanted a lot of property. I remember she was saying, on the water. And, um, at that time, a lot of homes were being built out there with larger lots, fan out on the water side, the fronts were more narrow, and I can name a few that are that way. As you go all the way up and down and around Bay Shore. So, um, it was an understanding at that time, uh, I remember on, uh, the commission.
Miss Protos, let me interrupt you.
That, that was the understanding of, that they could build two houses.
Let me interrupt you on a point of order here. Would you like to make a motion and then we can have discussion?
Oh, you asked for a comment, and that's why I started, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, normally the discussion.
Sir.
Okay.
I move that we approve, uh, application, uh, application for ordinance twenty seventeen dash twenty, uh, from R one hundred to R one hundred A.
Motion, uh, by Miss Protos, seconded by Mister Terrapany. Okay, I'm sorry, now, I'll proceed with the discussion.
Well, now follow your lead again, sir.
Finial, thank you.
And at that time, um, Mrs. Thompson was thinking of putting two houses on that lot, bringing, I think, a nephew down or a niece, but she passed away and it never materialized. It is a very large lot and, uh, uh, like I said, it was purchased and came. It is a very large lot, and, like I said, it was purchased and came, and they came to the commission, not coming to the planned zoning. And at that time, because I was mayor then in the early nineties, they said, yes, you could build two houses there. She's in her legal right to ask for it.
Any other discussion, comments by the board members?
I have, I have one question for staff. Sort of, the setbacks that exist now on, on side property lines in the R one hundred compared to the R one hundred A, what, what is the difference in those setbacks?
The difference essentially is five feet, because you can go down to a minimum of, of ten foot on one side, and you have to make up the additional five feet on the other side, because it's a combined setback on both sides of twenty-five feet. In the R one hundred, R one hundred A has a straight ten-foot side setback. So again, the applicant gets to decide where they want that, how they want to apportion that. Could be twelve foot on, on either side. It could be fifteen on one and ten on the other. That's determined by the applicant, so there's no guarantee that on the neighbor, the adjoining side, she'd choose whichever side she wanted to have the fifteen-foot setback essentially if she went down to the ten-foot. But that's essentially what you're talking about, the difference. It's five foot.
Okay, so, so if theoretically the house was built to the fifteen-foot on the outside of the property that adjoins other property owners, and the ten-foot on the center where it adjoins the other lot, that, that would mean, in that scenario, there'd be no difference, right?
No difference from where, well, today, I think it's actually a little bit farther than fifteen feet over. So like, it would still affect the view shed, but it'd be a less of an impact on the view shed.
Oh, I'm concerned about spot zoning. I know you said in the past twenty years or so, there's been a few instances of that. I think if it's appropriate to change the zoning, we should look at the whole area rather than one, one area. It's a beautiful piece of property, no doubt, but I'm uncomfortable with it because to me, it seems like spot zoning. Any other comments or questions before we take a vote? We'll call, please.
Mr. Terrapini?
Yes.
Mrs. Protos?
Yes.
Mr. Hesse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. St. Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
No.
Are there any motion carries? Next item on the agenda is item number four five. Application seventeen dash forty-five, resolution two thousand seventeen dash twenty-one. Request for conditional use and site plan approval to allow for manufacturing of recreational watercraft in the IR industrial restricted zoning district, and to construct a new seven thousand nine hundred and eighty square-foot building at fourteen thirty L and R Industrial Boulevard. And we'll begin with the staff report.
Thank you again. This is a conditional use approval to allow for manufacturing of recreation watercraft in the R, in the R and IR or the industrial restrictive district, and approval for an associated site plan for a seven thousand nine hundred and eighty square-foot building. The owner is Four Real Fishing, and the agent for the application is Floyd Construction, Justin R. Floyd, who you may remember from Reload. So that's why he may look familiar to everyone. Anyway, with that, applicant is seeking the conditional use permit for approval to construct an additional seven thousand nine hundred and eighty square-foot building on site to be used for the manufacturing of boats. Dorado Boats, which manufactures custom boats, will be moving to the property from outside the city. And the property is currently developed with an existing two-story, six thousand three hundred square-foot building, which will, which will be used for offices and to support the, and as a support facility for the new building. The property is currently vacant, even though there, there's an existing building there. There's nobody in utilizing that building at this time. Pursuant to the criteria for the conditional use laid out in section two zero nine point zero one Standards of Review, the proposed use is subject to the conditional use review in the IR district, and the proposed design complies with setbacks and other performance standards of the IR district. The proposed use is located adjacent to other use, like uses, and will be built consistent with the performance standards in the IR district. The site is located north of a residentially developed property along Ja Rule Boulevard. However, the area has a mix of industrial and manufacturing uses. The conditional use is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of all the elements of the comprehensive plan. It's also consistent with the land use category that's out there, which is industrial. The use will result, will not result in any significant adverse impacts. The surrounding area has a mix of industrial uses and adjacent to properties are zoned to allow for development of more in your manufacturing industrial uses. So you do have some large vacant tracks that are across the street from this particular property that are now currently set for M one in the county district, so that's a manufacturing district. So you will see more manufacturing in this general area, and that's the county's plan. And the north of the river area is meant to be an employment area. As a result, manufacturing industrial uses over time will become more prevalent in this particular area. The proposed use will not adversely impact or affect the property values in the area. The development is not required, will not require the extension of additional public services. They're already served by our services, and it will not adversely affect the ability of the city to provide adequate public facilities to the site currently, again, and currently they're connected. The proposed use is consistent with the majority of the uses in the area, as well as the planned uses in the area. The conditional use will provide for effective and orderly development and will put a site back into use that has been vacant for some time. Now to go through the, this, the next criteria is the site planning criteria and the concurrency criteria. In your backup, there is the concurrency application that usually moves forward with the site plan. That application has since been signed. You have an unsigned copy, but there has been, the applicant did sign the application tonight. So that application is considered a full and competent application to move forward. With that, the site plan for the seven thousand nine hundred square-foot building is for the manufacturing of boats. The new building is to be constructed within, within one year. Utilities are available. The access is from the existing access to the site. Total parking is twenty-one. Parking spaces will be provided, including one ADA accessible parking space. Under the landscaping and screening section, there is a fifteen-foot undisturbed landscape buffer is being provided along. And again, that should be the south property line, not property line. So that correction will be made moving forward. This is the only property line that actually abuts residential development and the only place where additional landscaping is required. There are no right-of-way issues, no fire protection issues, with the exception of they've asked for a couple of conditions from the fire marshal, just to make sure that there is compliance moving forward on the new structure. With that, there are no endangered species that will be impacted. There is no transfer development requested. The environmental has no, the environmental, the environment has no significant wetlands or environmental issues. The flood zone for the property was shown as X, but it's also AEs included. That just, that information was left off of the staff report. That was my error. So we just want to include that not only is in the X flood zone, but there is a portion in the AE flood zone as well. The staff finds that the proposed development application is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. Under the level of service analysis, the only clarification that I'd like to make is under drainage. The drainage is actually off-site. There's a shared pond between this pond and the property to the north. So there is a shared and existing cross-maintenance agreement for that drainage for both sites. So that drainage pond, even with the new building going up, is consistent and meets the criteria set out for SWFMA. And SWFMA has supplied a letter that they're, they have no objection with the, for the drainage that is proposed and as shown by the applicant. And with that, we are expecting fifty-six trips that will be generated by the development at buildout. And again, this particular road is, it will not degrade the level of service on L and R or on the adjacent roadways. So we're not anticipating any traffic impacts from the project. And with that, we find that the, it, it's consistent with both the concurrency management requirements, the mobility management requirements, and with the criteria for the conditional use. And as such, staff is recommending approval of application seventeen forty-five and resolution two thousand and seventeen twenty, requesting conditional use permit and site plan approval to allow manufacturing of recreation watercraft and construction of a seven thousand nine hundred square-foot building at fourteen thirty L and R Boulevard in the IR industrial restricted zoning district with the following conditions. Developer is responsible for acquiring all jurisdictional permits and for meeting the minimum criteria of the Land Development Code. Construction plans shall be consistent with the site plan. The payment of all requisite, all requisite fees attended to the project shall be paid in accordance with the Land Development Code. The existing structure will not be required to be retrofitted with sprinklers, provided that the west wall of the proposed metal structure is a two-hour fire-rated wall separating the two buildings. The proposed metal building will be sprinkled, sprinkler protected. The fire department connection will be out and away from the building within a hundred feet of the existing fire hydrant to the north side of the driveway. The existing gravel grass pad in front of the proposed metal building will either be paved or rated to support thirty tons of fire apparatus. The applicant must provide shielded lighting and direct all lighting internal to the, to the project. It should just be the project way should be removed. The conditional use and site plan will expire within one year of approval if the building permit is not, is not issued for the property. And with that, I can answer any change, any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Mr. Terrapini?
Thank you. Heather, why does this, the zoning is industrial, what is it, restricted? Why do we need a conditional use for this?
Because unfortunately, personal watercraft under the IR district requires a conditional use. I, I don't make it up. I promise. I, I promise I don't make it up. But essentially, what it is, is most of the manufacturing uses in IR are kind of zoned out. IR is meant to be one of those zoning districts that's more of a buffer between your heavy industrial uses and residential or other commercial uses. So in areas that, most of the areas in the city that you have IR in are more buffer areas. Now, that's not to say that we haven't had uses over time that have kind of skirted the, the, the use and that type of thing by coming in as another use and then, and then morphing. So you, because you do have things in IR that do not belong in IR. As a result, they do need to meet today's code. Today's code all requires this conditional use, unfortunately, which is allowing, requiring the additional step. However, at the same time, they gotta come through site plan because it's a new building. So they're, they're actually just adding an additional application as part of this process, and so we run them concurrently.
Did you have the conditional uses and permitted uses for the zoning class in this backup?
Hmm, that's a good question.
It's helpful to compare and contrast some of the.
I may not have, I may not have actually put it in here, but.
That's right. I mean, it's helpful to consider, you know? Because in a lot of cases, you'll have something that's way more intensive. That's a permitted use versus something like this, so it's helpful to compare.
Don't think I actually included him in this backup, but we'll do that in the future.
I mean, obviously, it's compatible to the area, is my thinking. I mean, even the, the big vacant land tract that's under contract right now that's being rezoning has an element of residential and more industrial. So I mean, I think it's totally compatible, and I'm happy that y'all picked Tarpin Springs, so we appreciate that. Glad we could lure you over here. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions or comments by the board? At this time, we'll hear from the applicant if the applicant wishes to say anything.
Thank you again for seeing us. I, I loved your comment, Mr. Terrapini, because we were kind of shocked by the same thing before we bought the property and made sure it was allowable use. And then this, this one note came up about the recreational watercraft, our surprise, so here we are. But, no, we're, they want to bring approximately twenty to twenty-one jobs to Tarpin Springs. So we think it's a, it's a win-win. We've looked at the, at the property and, and think it's gonna, you know, overall bring some, some, you know, the jobs and then make that site look a lot better. So I don't think there's any, any issues or anything that will come up that we've gone through, but I'll be more than happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Before you do, could you please state your name and address? I may have missed it when you come up there.
I apologize. Justin Floyd, thirty-three twenty-eight Downing Point Drive, Land O' Lakes, Florida.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant by the board members? Thanks, sir. This time, we'll entertain any questions or comments by members of the public which to speak in favor of or in opposition to the application. You come to the podium, state your name and address, please. Seeing none, we'll declare the public portion of the hearing closed, and we're open for a motion by the board.
I'll make a motion that we approve application seventeen dash forty-five and resolution two thousand seventeen twenty-one, requesting a conditional use permit and site plan approval to allow manufacturing of recreational watercraft and construction of a seven thousand nine hundred and eighty square-foot building.
Second. Is that subject to the conditions listed in the staff report?
Yes, it is.
And there was a motion, a second by Mr. Seaman, I believe?
Yes.
And a motion by Ms. St. Arnold. Any discussion on the motion by the board? Take a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Terrapini?
Yes.
Mrs. Protos?
Yes.
Mr. Hesse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. St. Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is staff comments.
Staff does not have any formal comments, with the exception of two. I'd like to welcome both Mr. Terrapini and our alternate member to the board. I look forward to working with both of you. If you have any questions, please give me, me or Kim a contact information, and we'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have going forward. I know Townsend probably has no questions for me, but just in case you do, you have my number. And then the other question, the other comment that we have is related to what we kind of talked about last time. We're gonna start doing some research on what other communities do for their noticing criteria, and I'll be bringing that forward. I don't know how soon that's going to be, because the principal planner has since left us, since our last meeting. So as a result, I don't know how quickly I'll get that, but we will get that forward. I'm very lucky that I do have an intern, so I will have her be doing some of the research to get us, get us started as far as that. And what I'll probably do is put together a report and then make a recommendation based on, on what other jurisdictions are doing here in Pinellas County. And with that, if you're okay with that, that's what I have.
Well, I'm glad it hadn't gotten lost. Thank you, Karen.
It's not been lost. We have it, put in a work plan for you.
Right. Any questions, staff? Any other comments from staff? Okay, we're ready for board comments. Item number seven.
I have one.
Ms. Protos?
I don't know how to ask this to Heather, but in, when development plans come before us, and we have talked about the lighting on these streets. We need to look at what type of lighting they're putting in, because on Bay Shore Heights, which is right behind me, we wanted the lights to look down. Well, they do, but they're not a deterrent to theft. They're not a deterrent to people walking through your property at night. We've had problems there. They light up, but they don't light up real well. So I don't know what we can do about that, because when they look down, they look just at one area, and the rest is dark. We've had, I know that I personally have had prowler, theft, people walking through my yard at night. They park down there. They meet. I keep calling the police. So we need to look very closely at these lights that they put up in these areas to make sure it really lights better than the ones that come just down to a smaller area, because the residents have to be protected, and their property has to be protected. And these are, I feel personally, that the lights on this development are poor for the area. So I don't know what we can do about that, but if something comes up at that magnitude again, we're gonna have to look at what they're doing because it just isn't good.
We can certainly ask for the, those projects to bring forward their lighting plans, but we do not have currently the lighting standards. And I know I had put together something for you guys last year, and it kind of got lost in the, in the shuffle. We'll move forward on that just as soon as I've got some time to spend, spend putting that back together for you guys, for us to kind of go through it, because at least so we can talk about that information. Because we never really get to talk about it. I gave it to you, and then we never really revisited it. So we can revisit the lighting, the lighting at one of these meetings that you have that doesn't have a big agenda, like tonight. If that's something that the majority of the board really wants to do, I'd be glad to do that and bring it back.
Well, after this experience, other than asking them to do the lights that way, we need to do something because it's very, very poor out there. And I'm not gonna be interested in saying they have to be down almost to the sidewalk to be able to save, you know, what we're talking about. We talk about light, lighting is a factor for security, and it's not working.
Do I have a consensus from the board that you guys want to bring back the lighting thing, issue, and I can give, and I can bring it forward?
I appreciate you putting this in there because it's, the lighting that you're restricting is excessive lighting that shines onto neighboring properties. And if you live next to a development, you might not want it shining into your own windows or onto your backyard. And also, the studies have been showing that excessive lighting is also not a deterrent to security. In fact, it's harder to see for law enforcement or anyone else to see what's going on if they have bright lights shining at them. In other words, there can be people closing on the property, and you won't even see them because of the glare from the lights. And so, I, I think it's worthy of considering still.
Well, in my research on the computer, that doesn't stand. I'm sorry. Lighting's gonna let you see who's on your property. They're gonna let you see who's coming around your garage or taking things off your property. And we need to be very cautious in what we do with saying we want it down. It has to be, and I'm not saying to put it into someone's house, but look at the type of lamps they're doing, because this isn't working. And it is our responsibility on the planning and zoning board, whether you agree or not, that we have to look at the lighting for protection of the neighboring houses and then part of the neighborhood that is affected.
Just that neighborhood that they just put in behind your house is what you're talking about?
Yes, it lights up a little bit, but not enough. It's still dark. And I'm gonna tell you, you can go to the police department and see how many times I've called, my neighbors have called, and what the problems have been. There have even been drug deals back then. We've had to call the police. You know, now the developer's probably gonna come after me for saying all this, but it's the lights. It's not the developer. Next time, we've got to look at that real good to make sure the lighting and its cheap light. Maybe that's why it works that way, but it just doesn't work. And it's too late. There's nothing we can do about it now. And as crime gets worse, you see it every night on TV, we have a responsibility. Thanks.
Any other board comments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you. Meeting's adjourned at 7:50 PM.
I have it. The way it is, it's locked out there.
You are welcome, sir. Thank you for coming.
Didn't we talk about the lighting they were using?
Same sort of thing that was in here, just so it wouldn't be, you know, shining onto neighboring properties outside of the plant.
Yeah, didn't, didn't we discuss that? And that's what we, we asked for.
It was discussed, but, I mean, it was part of the conditions, I think. I don't, I don't know if we...
I think it was. That's why I'm trying to, I'm gonna drive down there tonight and look at it.
Well, it used to be woods. It was not dark before.
If you don't get them, like, come.
You can get away with all kinds of stuff in the woods. You're so inclined.